Hey, Umberto, can you hear us? Hello? Tony, can you hear us?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
How about now? Can you hear us? Humberto's having audio issues.
Much better.
That's better?
Way better.
It might be the camera. Maybe I'm not powering it enough with the laptop. Let me try one more time.
Okay, I sent you the um, I sent you the video of what's happening right now.
You know, usually if there's not alcohol involved, we 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 get some compliance immediately. Usually with alcohol involved, we get compliance and then twenty minutes later. Somebody turns the radio or stereo back up. And we get multiple calls and that seems to be a lot of the problems that we experienced. But to do that, Aunt Mr. Lopez would have to. Quote, be the victim or the reporting party on the crime. So then he would say. You know, I want I want to place Mr. Diaz under private persons arrest. He doesn't literally have to do that. But he tells us and we're the vehicle to make that happen. And you know, the penal code does not allow us to disregard that. So but we can handle that in a few ways. We can go back to Mr. Diaz and give him a citation. To appear in court because now we have a true reporting identifiable person who called. Or we could at Mr. Lopez's request usually. File a case with the with the local or the district attorney's office. And let them file the charges and what they then would do then if they. Find it. Appealable to them, they will issue a letter. To Mr. Diaz and have him come to court and start the misdemeanor court process that way. So there's that. So at the direction of council, I did review. A couple ordinances from around the local areas. And the one I don't know, do you have the PowerPoint up, Umberto? The one I emailed yesterday?
It should be on the screen.
If not.
You see it on the screen?
I see the check register on the screen.
Is it not updating, Umberto?
It's not.
Okay.
It's okay. I can I can explain it real easy. So the PowerPoint is my existing PowerPoint from before and I tapped one of the screen on there and the information is simple. Like this, yeah, there you go.
I thought I was sharing, my bad.
And so. This is one, this is one version. I thought that that's kind of what you guys might have been getting at. If I was wrong in my assumption, then we can clear that up as well. But you can read it and I'll just read all the way to the. The bold print, no person shall make or cause or suffer permit be made or cause any premises owned by occupied by him or her. Between the hours of eleven PM and seven AM on any Friday or Saturday. Or between the hours of ten and seven AM and the other day, basically for. Just reading the piece quiet of any neighborhood and then it shows that it doesn't apply to. Public celebrations and and things like that, which usually were the. Were the sponsor of those events and were very responsible, we meaning the city. So. So what this does though, this puts us as the police department in a kind of precarious position and and the. Position of, you know, we're we're now the noise police, which. I guess that's of our our duties, but we also enforce. Penal code violations such as four fifteen of penal code, which I already talked about. It just puts us in a position where, you know, we're driving down the road and then we see a. Gross violation at two o'clock in the morning, we we issue them a citation based on. I would propose a revised city ordinance. And I'm not sure what the penalties would be yet, but. And then then we get into the finger pointing, well, you didn't go. To that corner house over there. They were loud and reasonable the other day and it just becomes a big. A big mess when basically the caller who calls it in. Should kind of have some skin in the game, so to speak. So. I don't know how. I guess I I do, I I do have a suggestion if you don't. If you mind, don't mind me making another suggestion is we can go on a. Kind of a public education campaign and. You know, through various means, social media, maybe. You know, with the school district and mail out flyers or or something to that effect where we can kind of explain. Our our processes here. You know, but basically, like I said, the first PowerPoint, it's about being a good neighbor. But obviously the calls keep coming in and. So that's. That's where I'm at. I, you know, I'm willing to go in any direction you guys tell me to go in, but I was just giving you some. Our managed point from the police department's viewpoint. We'll turn it back over to whoever.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions to Chief Starvers regarding these? Chief, part over here, do we have, do we keep a record of? Of those calls for loud noise, you know, like we gave a track of how many we get in a month or in a week?
Yeah, so it's just a quick search in our computer system. Based on the the code that we have, it's loud noise and I think last year before I. Before I did the initial presentation a couple of months ago, Mr. Rodrigo, I think we had. Two hundred and fifty up to that point, which was in July. And so it's a, it's a.
For the full year?
For the full, for a full year, yeah, from a from a June to June to June, basically. So like it's, it's a lot for a little city, but I, but I. I have so. Yeah, I understand and there's a couple of people that call quite often regarding a certain area town and it's the northwest. Part of town and as people I know. That, you know, I know the officers do try to. Try to get them to. Step up to the plate, if you will, a little bit, but they. They don't, they never have, but I definitely can intervene. I think I. I can be a little more persuasive with them, but. Usually at the night shift handle their own business like that, but. Yeah.
All right. So the summarize. Based on our own municipal code, there isn't much teeth in it. Otherwise, going off the penal code does have a little bit more teeth, but you need someone who's willing to. To actually go through with.
Yeah, you know, and I briefly touched upon it, the other, the other session too is, you know, it really. We go to the, we go to the call that, excuse me, sometimes we go a second time. And. Probably sometimes the third time and, you know, when the alcohol is really taking effect. And I myself, early, very early on my career. Went to a loud music call or I was in route to a loud music call. For like the third time and another helping another agency out and there was an officer involved shooting that happened. So if we're, if that's the, you know, that's not the ideal situation, but there was a use of force that occurred there. And we usually like to be able to, if that does happen, to go back and say. Hey, Mr. Lopez called three times and we talked to him every time and he said he wanted us handled that way. It doesn't make it look like we're just. Quote, targeting this residence and then an officer of shooting happened and something bad happened and we're totally out on our own. So. Kind of the way everything has kind of shifted these days.
And that's why the at least and staff internally, we've discussed it a bit and. Maybe the next logical step would be, you know, working on some sort of educational campaign, getting people to understand what their rights are and. You know, I, the misconception is that there is a. Curfew, quote unquote, curfew that seven or ten or eleven. There isn't technically a curfew, obviously, that anyone can make a complaint at any time. So whether or not they're willing to follow through with it. But I think if we can educate the community a little bit more, the civics of it, hopefully. That can help the community understand better, you know, what the process is and if they really do have an issue with someone, then.
Yeah.
To step up.
Yeah, I would like to.
Yeah, that's the case too, you know, and it's probably something that should be done at this point if it's bothering people. But it's don't, it's not gonna, it's not gonna change people's behavior overnight. Next month or the month after, it's gonna be an ongoing process. So. People are resistant to changes. You guys probably all know, but. Yeah, Tony did have a great point. People think there's a a curfew like ten o'clock, eleven o'clock is the magic time. There's not in our city. And, you know, the information I have on this last PowerPoint would. It would go that direction and put a noise curfew on it. So. Anyway, I'm probably rambling, but I'm certainly here to listen to anybody's suggestion or input.
Yes, what I would like to make a comment, but also as Moses on the legal side. What's your experience regarding, you know? People's rights regarding, I I believe. Any, everybody has the right either, you know, they have the right to rest. I know, for instance, there's people that actually. Sleep during the day because they work during the night. So and and sometimes there may be the occasion that the neighborhood may have live music during the day. But at the same time, it's probably invading the privacy of that individual that is trying to sleep. But at the same time, I also believe that we need to understand, understand the rules. I believe it's a part of the culture, maybe to have a party, loud music, you know, whatever the case may be. Celebrating celebration or something. But at the same time, I I believe that's the key word to be a good neighbor and be respectful to others. So I think having a good relationship with your neighbors and. You know, be conscious about, you know, the do's and don'ts. It does goes in a long way. So I also believe that educating and at least informing our community about the. City ordinance. Allow for things to do and noise reduction, all those issues will be will be fruitful to. Having a good relationship with each other. Of the, you know, community with the police department, community with. City hall, community with city staff, you know, having a good relationship will go a long way. And also, you know, good relationship between neighbors. Because, you know, there are also complaints that sometimes because. Someone doesn't like the other person or he did something. To me or him or whatever, maybe they may just call just to kind of. You know, distract the party or avoid the celebration. So I believe it is a serious issue that that we need to study better and and. But we do need to start with educating the community. I believe, I believe that will be a good way to go, but I would like to see what other council members have to say. And give direction to. Chief and. City staff.
Can I just jump in quickly? I have not been asked to look at this in particular, so. I have not reviewed the ordinance. But what I will say is, I think. There's another option here. There's a couple of options here. You can also incorporate. Violations as part of the zoning ordinance and. You know, it's easy, this works best more for businesses and land uses where you have a conditional use permit. Because you have some enforcement authority there. But where you're dealing more with residential. I think it can be useful if you do have it in the zoning ordinance, because again, I haven't reviewed this, our particular ordinance here. And I'm not sure who exactly is liable, but if it's in the zoning ordinance and the property owner would be liable. And you were, you could record any kind of fines. Against the property. And so as a lien, and so. If you do that, then that puts pressure on the property owner to make things happen and to rectify the situation. So so that's another way of doing it. And part of that process, you would include in the ordinance, a declaration. That noises at whatever threshold, however you want to. Set that limit, but whatever, once they reach or exceed that limit, they would be declared a public nuisance. And then at that point, it would also open up some other remedies, potentially for the city or private citizens. You know, because if police can't always, police or code enforcement, because that's the other part of this, if you put it in the zoning ordinance. Then you would have the option of also having your code enforcement step in and and would some of the enforcement on that. But. But if you declared a public nuisance by ordinance, then you open up the possibility of private suits. Which leave the city out of it. And so as long as the city issues a citation, a private citizen. Could, who's constantly being victimized by these circumstances. Could then bring their own lawsuit, get an injunction, get some kind of relief from the court against. Another private party who continually or habitually habitually violates the noise ordinance. So those are just a few thoughts off the top of my head. Again, I haven't looked at this in particulars. I don't know how exactly how it works. I haven't been under the hood, so to speak. On this one.
Okay. And have you heard anything regarding litigation regarding or lots of regarding. Complaint against the city, in city or. Against, you know, between violating. Resident rights, is there any rights that they have in order to that they can. Defend themselves or say something against the city ordinance?
You're talking about a private citizen suing the city?
Yes.
No, I don't believe so. Now, when you're talking about the private citizen suing suing the city, are you talking about a victim or somebody who were citing?
Someone who was probably upset with a with an ordinance, thinking that's violating their personal rights, correct? Yeah.
So so somebody who who is complaining of loud noises?
No, somebody complaining that maybe the rule ordinance was too strict. And that violates like a personal freedom of speech.
Yeah, I mean, that is a concern. I have heard of of challenges to them. And the last time this came up or the last time I reviewed it was maybe about five years ago. I think there were some, there was some litigation. Involving noise ordinances where. The court seemed to suggest that we had to have more objective criteria. It couldn't be subjective, meaning that. It's just totally discretionary as to whether or not it's too loud. And so. I think back then, I remember a number of jurisdictions. Who were posting on, you know, some legal bulletin boards, city attorney bulletin boards. Were talking about transitioning to a more objective criteria where they could actually measure a decibel level for for. For example, but the problem there was that, you know, it required equipment, special equipment and. There was a cost involved there, training and calibrating the equipment and it wasn't very ideal. So it's kind of a tough area to begin with. But there are ways of doing it. And again, I haven't gone under the hood, so to speak on this one, so I can't really speak to. To what the latest trend is on it right now.
Okay. If I can just, oh, someone talking?
Go ahead, Chief.
Yeah, Moses brought up decimal meters. So I did find some of that language in a in a neighboring city, not not in this county. And I reached out to their interim chief and to talk about the decimal meter device itself and. In in the language of the ordinance, there was calibration issues and all these different protocols they had to go through. To use this device. So I I reached out to the, like I said, the interim chief and. They never, they, the guy had been there fifteen years and he has never seen the decimal meter. So I don't think if they, it's gonna be. So they don't even use it. So I think if we were going to put something in the ordinance, we would definitely have to make it. You know, equipment like that, we definitely have to use it. So, but it was pretty entailed. It was City of Salma.
So there is ordinance out there for this.
Decimal, decibel, I said decimal, the decibel meter, yeah, there is one out there.
The ordinance is important.
Yeah.
For this type of stuff. We need to look into it.
Yeah, I think a safer way might be to. To kind of. You know, if it's complaint driven, I think that's the best way because then you could, it's it's a little bit more objective because now it's not. The city making the judgment call, you have a private citizen who complained. And obviously they heard the the sound or whatever, the noise, whatever it is. And if, you know, if you tailor the ordinance to say, you know, your sounds are not, you know, at this hour and so forth, they're not going to. Reach this far, you know, X amount of distance. You know, and you would obviously have to study what that might be. That that's kind of a one way to kind of work around that issue where you have to make it more objective.
Yeah, we can. Chief and I can look at maybe cleaning up some of the municipal code language and and also education. And hopefully not overstepping too much, but making it a little bit easier and more understood by the community. How that enforcement can work. Does that seem like a good? Direction? That clear direction for us, Chief? I can't hear you, but I'm gonna.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
Eighteen months into this, we could figure it out.
I know you had mentioned some, we could clean it up a little bit. So let's, let's start with that and. Do the education and see if that that helps alleviate a little bit before we go too too deep.
Yeah, sounds good.
In doing the education to the community, sometimes we need to. Get the community involved in case we decide to. Create a new ordinance with courses and that I believe the community. Needs to get involved so we can hear both sides of the story and in that way we can react to what. Needs, so we we really need to take this seriously and I think that's a good start. Okay, thank you, Chief. And then, yeah, there are comments by Andres or Amidis.
I have, I have one, you know, I think while we're doing the research on on what would fit the community best, we should also look at the. Like I mentioned before, most of these disturbances do happen in apartment complexes because, you know, one next to each other, somebody has. Loud music during the day or during the night. So, you know, we should make sure that whatever we are doing, it does also cover the. Apartment complexes, even if it's private property, it should still. Be in compliance with the municipal code or whatever ordinance we we pass.
Multi-family, true, there might be something there.
Yeah, everything we talked about. Tonight, Mr. Miras would apply to the apartment complexes as well.
And well. We need to, Director Yang is letting me know that there is an, there's a noise element in the general plan. That does talk a little bit with, that concurs a bit with the land use, so we can look at that too. So. Well, we'll, we'll manage it.
Okay. Seeing other questions or comments. We'll move over to the next item. Thank you, Chief. That will be item six B discussion regarding traffic undulations on city streets. This item will be taken by public books.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. This is Scott Davis, our public court supervisor. Rob is also on tonight, but. He he has been working on some of the. Things for the eighteen inch transmission line. So I kind of. Took the lead on this one, did quite a bit of. Online. Checking on these. There is a difference between speed bumps and speed humps or undulations. Speed bumps are primarily used in parking lots. They're, they're the really tall, narrow. Bumps in the in the drive. Drive lanes to slow people down to less than five miles an hour, like parking lots with pedestrians and things. So. Basically, what we're looking at is the undulations. Which in everything I looked up is more referred to as humps through. Caltrans and a lot of the like County Department of Transportation's. Los Angeles Department of Transportation, places like that. One of the first things that kind of surprised me is they do have limitations on. When they can be installed. So one of the first is they can only be installed, you know, on streets with speed limits of thirty miles an hour or less, which is basically what we have in town. And that. It meets the eighty five, eighty fifth percentile. Speed. So I looked up the definition of that and the eighty fifth percentile of speed. Is the speed at and below, which eighty five percent of all vehicles traveling during a survey. So if if we're doing a survey and a hundred cars go through. Whatever speed, the eighty eighty five percent of them we're doing. Would justify if they're doing five, five miles an hour over the posted speed limit or the even an unposted. Statewide, any unposted. Public street in a city is twenty five miles an hour, doesn't have to be posted, that is, that is the law. So anything above twenty five. So that would put us into doing traffic surveys. The other thing is they cannot be, they cannot be installed. On designated truck or transit routes or any street identified as a primary emergency route. So basically that would eliminate Seventh Avenue. San Joaquin and because of our ambulance service being at the end of Third. Street, we would, we couldn't put them on on Third. The one good thing about having to have a traffic survey is our. Community Development Director Cal New is 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 applying for a grant to help create a local road safety plan. So that would hopefully help with the traffic survey studies. And also help create a plan for best areas to to place humps or other, they call. Traffic calming techniques. One. One area that I looked at. Is there is California Fire Code. From the twenty nineteen California Fire Codes, section five oh three point four point one. Says traffic calming devices shall be prohibited unless approved by the fire code official. So we would have to, after we do traffic studies, we would have to get with the fire department. Is one of the other problems with these in every report or summation that I read. Was it does slow down emergency. Response times. They do have some different types of undulations to help with that, depending on the situation of the roads. This would also need to involve residents in the area. And try to get eighty. Recommends trying to get sixty. Sixty six point six seven percent of the residents in the area. To agree. In a consensus to to install these. So. The expense isn't, isn't tremendous. I didn't think. Depending on whether we did it ourselves or if it's contracted out, they're saying that the estimated price is somewhere between five. And seventy five, five thousand to seventy five hundred dollars. Per undulation for installation, which with prevailing wage and everything, doesn't seem. That out of, out of reach and maintenance is fairly minimal. They do have to be marked. One of the things I looked up was any kind of lawsuits against the undulations. The biggest thing with that is if if they're not marked, if if there's not a warning that says hump. Within, I forget the distance, but I want to say it was a hundred and fifty feet. Or less before the hump and then most everybody did show markings on the. Or less before the hump, and then most everybody did show markings on the hump so that people could see exactly where it was at when they got to it. Um, so the, the cost of maintenance would be. Uh, they're estimating five hundred dollars a year just because you need to maintain the, if, if the hump starts to deteriorate or. If the markings start going away, that would be a, another maintenance issue on that. Um. Like you said, I think the best thing uh, which we, because we do need to do traffic surveys. Uh, would hopefully be if, if we're successful in getting that grant to help create that local road safety plan. Then we could, we could see where they're needed. Um, and then come up with a plan on where to, where to install them. There's several different. Methods of installation and, and recommendations as to how far apart. Um, they also talk about an average daily traffic volume. Um, in order to install them, it should actually be greater than one thousand vehicles per day that travel that particular road. Uh, so I think if, if we get that study done, then, then we can put a game plan together as to where we would need them, but. Uh, surprisingly, there's, there's more restrictions than I expected in just being able to start putting speed bumps in. Um, are there any questions on this?
Yeah, one quick one. Hey, Scott, did you or Grisella get any feedback or find anything out from RMA in terms of the insurance stuff?
No, Tony, um. Excuse me, um, but I, I did look up online about the lawsuits. And if they're installed correctly, there's really no. No base for a lawsuit if somebody's car actually gets damaged, and these, these undulations. Um, where a normal, a, a regular speed bump is anywhere from three inches to six inches high. And it's only up to a foot, a foot and a half wide. The undulations are at a maximum of three foot high and they're normally three to four feet wide. So even if somebody hits it going faster, the, the likelihood of their car bottoming out on it is less. And, and the indications on any of the lawsuits against this didn't touch a lot on the undulations versus speed bumps. But they did touch on them being installed improperly or improperly uh designated or not, um, signage with the signage being improper.
All right, thank you, Scott. Go ahead, sorry.
Uh. The, uh, well, thanks, Scott, you did gather a lot of information. Would you mention it, it has to be approved by sixty-four percent? That's in the neighborhood or citywide?
In, in the neighborhoods, it's, it's the. Um. When it directly affects the residents within the block. A two-thirds majority needs to support. For final im- implement, implementation. Because we don't want, we don't want to get. The complaints, we, it. We can't just go install them in a neighborhood and. Um. Then have all of the. The people coming and saying, why'd you put these in here? We don't want these. Now we gotta drive over this every day. So they, they recommend getting a consensus of, of two-thirds for that area that we're actually putting. The. Undulations in.
And uh, I believe the last time it was brought up to council, the fire department, do you have a concern regarding their. Equipment being too, being too low in slowing the response time, as you mentioned.
Yes. And I did look at some options for emergency. Response vehicles that would actually make it to where they could uh, on a, on a, on a two-lane street. They actually offset the undulations from lane to lane instead of going straight across both lanes in the same spot. So that emergency vehicles could actually drive through them like a chicane. They could drive around one into the other lane and drive around the other. Coming back across, and so there, there are methods of offsetting them like that. Um, in order for emergency vehicles to pass without having to go over them. Uh, one of the other methods was on a, on a four-lane street, putting them in as, as smaller. Undulations with the center line actually having one narrow enough that if the. Fire truck, let's say, is driving, straddling the center line of the road, he actually can straddle that undulation. And not have to, to experience the, the bump of going over it. So there are methods and, and means of working with. Emergency services to help their response time. Uh, and not have to go over the bumps or slow down for them. They, they may have to slow down just a little to swerve around it. But that's less time lost than slowing down to go over it. So there are, there are methods to accommodate for emergency crews.
Uh, what about the street sweeper? Since it's got like a metal plate that doesn't adjust up or down, it's really low to the ground?
It actually kind of floats that head when they drop it down. It. It's not held rigid in place, and so he may have to slow down a little bit to go over it, but it can go over that undulation. Um, basically the same as it goes through one of our valley gutters.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments from council?
Yeah, I do have a comment. Yeah, they're speeding throughout, yeah, they're speeding throughout the whole town, but I see that it's a major problem uh, seventh south of uh, skyline. So we need to look into finding if undulations is not the solution, we need to find a solution for that problem. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you.
Agreed. Um, I did have our, one of our reserve officers. Ask if we had a drainage problem on uh, Seventh Avenue. South of Skyline where we would possibly need to put a valley gutter in. To make sure that the rainwater makes it across Seventh without flooding Seventh. Um, there is no limitations on valley gutters for water control. Just a thought.
Another tool.
Yeah, and I know as we're looking at the Seventh Street uh, project using the hip funds and our own um, LTF funds. Um, I know we've mentioned it to our, our city engineer to look at how to incorporate some sort of traffic calming. As we rebuild, rehabilitate that, that street, so hopefully we can, we can continue on that as well.
Yes.
Okay, are there any other comments, questions regarding this information? Saying that, I believe uh, we'll go over the information you provided. Hopefully uh, call for another uh. Study session, uh, information session.
Okay, yeah, and, and I can, like I said, we can print this out off of some of the things I saw. I did print some out um, as I was making notes. Printed them out as my notes, so um, there is information out there. Um, it's, like I said, there's, there's some more hoops that we have to jump through than I was expecting, so. We can continue to work on it.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome, thank you.
We'll go over to item sixty, it is discussion regarding the street sweeper discussion. We'll be taking our.
Yeah, so Rob and Scott don't leave me just yet, but I did want to update the council. Um. Um, Joe from Mid Valley um, got back to me regarding a schedule. He knew from the beginning when we had first brought this up, uh, almost a year ago or less. About us wanting to kind of get back on a street sweeping schedule and having some sort of map that we could share with the community. Uh, this is what he sent me about two weeks ago, so I wanted to share it back with the council. I know at the previous meeting, there was some comments and concerns regarding the street sweeper not having cleaned for a while. Uh, according to Public Works, it was down for a bit. Um, last Friday, I think they were testing and running it again. They did some part of. The north half of Avonon, that I don't believe they finished anything else. This week, I believe they were on this, on the schedule. Tuesday, I did see them about, on San Joaquin Street. And I expect tomorrow they'll be continuing with the schedule as presented. From the email that Joe sent me, he mentioned that his hope is if they're able to stay on the schedule, that this should be enough. And it should mean what we're asking of in terms of keeping the community and the streets clean. Um, cause we, I told him maybe even three or four times a week. Um, he thinks that if we keep this up, that once a week, each side of town should be enough. Um, I know there's still some concerns, um, and I'll let Public Works share, but um, I know some issues that we've been seeing. Is that with Mid Valley, they are trying to have a committed driver, but it looks like they've have had a revolving door and had a few different drivers. That's usually what leads to the maintenance needing to happen, because the not being used, used properly and then things get damaged. Um, I know there's been some discussion as well as um, if we need to put some sort of parking ordinance such as on King Street. At least from what Joe's mentioned, that he's not aware of that being an issue if they're there early enough, but I know those have been some concerns that have been discussed. Um, Rob or Scott, I don't know if you guys want to add your two cents as well, what you've seen with the street sweeper lately?
Yeah, what I've, what I've seen, uh, they're having trouble filling uh, the driver on a consistent basis. Uh, I'm usually there when they're picking up the sweeper in the morning, and if they have trouble starting, I usually go out there and try to help them get it started. But uh, most of it is uh, they have a different driver. Within two weeks of training one, they're changing drivers on a regular basis. And I think that's more of the problem with the sweeper, because you got different driving techniques and everything, and. I don't think you can learn how to drive that sweeper in a week, so that's mainly what our problem is with the sweeper. Then uh, as far as the schedule. You start going down the residential streets and everything, there's so many cars there, so they're not even getting close to the gutters to be able to sweep the, sweep the gutters. So mainly all they're doing is hitting like Third Street, uh, First Street. Uh, King Street before the cars get there and then um, Skyline, that's about the majority of it. And the north and south streets, they'll hit those every once in a while, but as far as the residential part, they can't get to the gutter because there's so many cars on both sides of the street.
Okay. So uh, Rob, uh, so they, they've been, how many times a month they've been. Using or driving the street sweeper?
Um. Usually it's every week, if, if it's running every week. Lately, we've been having, having trouble with it. We had a water pump go out, so. It, you know, with the availability of parts nowadays, it's sitting for a month or so before we get parts in. So that throws off their schedule. They're jockeying people around just to fill the schedule when we do get it back up. Um, the guy that was driving it a couple of months ago, they have a new driver now, so they're, they, I don't know if they train them or anything, they just. Every time I see them, they always have a new driver, but there's nobody with them trying to train them on how to actually run it, so. They do a crash course and send them out there.
Yeah, because uh, if I recall properly, I believe the agreement with Mid Valley was to uh, do it once a month.
Originally?
Originally, yeah. So it looks like they're really trying to do more than their new agreement. And I believe uh, it is time for, for us, to us, or kind of see how we can improve. The street sweeping system because the community is the one that is asking for. You know, for them to be more active and, and I guess in the past, for some reason, they were not doing it at all.
Yeah, I think the original uh. Um, agreement on that sweeper was to sweep Skyline once a week.
Yeah.
And the town, I think they were trying to get the town once a month, but that was the original agreement that they had to sweep Skyline every week.
Yeah, you're right, Rob, because we, we pulled out the old agreement and a lot of it just. It says some nice things, but a lot of it wasn't enforceable, and that's what Joe and I kind of circled on was getting a schedule going and then maybe rewriting something where it's a little more enforceable. Um, I know given the issues that, that Rob has seen and what we're, we've been seeing, I think. It might not be so dependable to have Mid Valley as the, the drivers. Right now it works. And we kind of depend on it because we don't have enough staff to, to just run the, the street sweeper. But maybe in the future, we can look at how we can incorporate it and just bring it in-house, but it, it would be a cost and it would. Cause that requires a class B or class A, do you know, Rob?
I think it's class B.
Yeah, it's a class B.
With the water tank endorsement or no endorsement?
No. Yeah, it only carries about a, a hundred gallons of water, so they don't need a tank endorsement.
Yeah. But um, if council has any comments on the schedule itself or more direction of what you'd like us to do?
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I, I have some comments. You know, I think our number one issue is the, the consistency in which we're doing it, because we, we do already have a schedule. In place, but for one reason or another, we're unable to follow it, and I think, you know, if, if there exists an old agreement, we should work on a new one that fits our needs. And that way, if Mid Valley's not doing it, then, then we can do it, you know, if it, if it'll be costs, a, a cost on us as the city. Then perhaps we can um, find a way to, you know, generate that revenue and put it on, on the residence bill, but we also have to. You know, sort of educate or, or, you know, find a way for the residents to move the car during the days that, that the street's gonna be swept. That way, uh, the street sweeper does get all the, all of the gutters, not just, um, I have seen it all over town, you know, whenever they're, they're sweeping, you just see a lot of. Serving that they're going around the car, so it doesn't really get the entire, you know, it doesn't fully clean the way that we want it to. So, you know, I think revising um, those agreements and finding ways that, you know, we can um, fund this to be sustainable and that way we can move forward.
Thanks, Alex. Are there any other comments?
I just have a question.
What?
Yeah, my question is uh, more or less, what is the start, start time of a sweeper? I know it would vary, you know, if you have to gas up or whatever, but more or less, what is the start time?
Five. They're at the yard at six, six o'clock when I'm there, so. They, they come in and fire it up at six and they're rolling out the gate about that time.
All right, thank you.
Well, I believe that is the informational discussion for now.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, you too.
And. With that, we'll go over to item number seven, which is activity reports, special presentations, and committee reports. The first one, uh, we have a special presentation tonight, and it is the Avonno Regional Landfield Activity, Activity Report. By George Anderson Site Manager.
Yeah, so I'll interject momentarily here. Uh, George did reach out to the city clerk and then myself this morning to let us know that he was feeling under, under the weather. So he would be unable to deliver his presentation. He had sent us the numbers, but he was going to explain them in his presentation, so he asked if he could. Uh, our next meeting, uh, bring this back up. Um, and with that, I'm also going to interject and do an aside. Uh, I've. Received a comment from a community member, because they're used to us usually having public comment at six fifteen. They're asking if that we, if. They're asking if that we, if council would consider reopening public comment. There's a public comment that would like to be made.
I'd like to move so we can table this presentation from George Anderson for next meeting.
Okay. Have public comment or?
Open up public comment.
Other council?
So, there's that a consensus of everyone, right? I said, yes. Well, and, and you, and you can you do?
Everyone's okay with the reopening public comment?
Has everybody agreed with the consensus of opening public comments? Councilman Hernandez said yes.
Yes, for me, we do.
Mayor Prater Tim Ramirez?
Yes, sorry, the connection, yes.
Mayor Presiado.
Yes.
Okay.
So there is the consensus.
So mayor, you can go ahead and.
So at this time, we'll reopen public comment. Is there any public comments?
Hi, good evening, mayor and council, this is Veronica Agiri. Uh, first off, I'd like to thank you for reopening public comment. Um, as I said, I'm kind of used to you guys doing it, as said, on the agenda. Um, I do want to mention, I, you know, I remember back, you know, maybe a year or so ago. Uh, they did try to say that we're going to be, try to be more consistent, um, with kind of the closed session, open session kind of thing. Um, it's going to make, it makes it very impossible for us to go and try to do outreach to the community, to try to come on to these meetings. And exercise their rights of being active in these meetings and even doing public comment if you guys change up at the last minute. Um, I would ask that if you could please consider, um, being more consistent with that again. Um, you know, I went online and I shared your information about the meeting and then people come on and, you know, it's not, it, it's, it's unfair. So I really hope that, um, you know, this would also be in, you guys will take that into consideration in future meetings. Um, one thing that I did want to mention, because I missed the last meeting's public comment as well. I, it, it's kind of disheartening, because I want to go back to the same issue. Um, and complaint that I hear from all my community members, people that we've done outreach with and, uh, people that work, you know, with us. Uh, that we're trying, you know, we, as we try to get the community to, um, speak up and voice their concerns. Last meeting was about chickens, this meeting we're talking about noise, when are we going to discuss odor? Odor is also a violation of people's rights, it's also a nuisance. You, I've met, heard the word nuisance, I've heard the word violation, I heard the word could possibly be any type of legal action. But yet, we still have not discussed the odor issue. I understand we could go to the air district, but I'm sorry, but the air district cannot service our community the way it needs to be. By the time they get here, odors are non-existent and we all know they exist. I've been working for the last month at a low income apartment complex, right down from the landfill. I can't even imagine, I feel bad for the people that have to live there, that have to smell that daily. What it's like for a child to have to wake up and walk to school and smell the stench of nasty garbage and we have to pretend that it doesn't exist. I think it's time that we finally address this issue. I think this, the community has the right to know. And as we start talking about chickens, that we start talking about stop signs, we start talking about speed bumps, yeah, it's all important. But what about those twelve hundred signatures that were presented to you guys almost two years ago that still have not gotten the right to speak? Still have not addressed this issue. I think it's time, I really think it's time. And, uh, you know, I think, yeah, it's great, let's talk about all the fiestas and everything else and the loud music. But what about the other people that are, are, have to wake up or have to sleep, but their windows closed, because they can't get fresh air, because it smells like crap? I mean, that's a violation of someone's rights too, and it's, and it also has to do with equity, let's deal with that kind of stuff. So anyways, again, thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I do appreciate all the work each and every one of you do, but I really think that we have to address old issues as well.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Veronica, and like I've said, happy to talk with you or any of the community members, um, regarding their concerns. Um, definitely not ignoring it and I was going to share it during my closing, but we are. We are hoping and expect to have a town hall or forum next month. With all the agencies that have a little bit more expertise and jurisdiction regarding the landfill. To hear out the community and their concerns. Uh, we're still, um, following up on a date and then the setting and all that, so I'll be happy to circle with, back with you and kind of discuss that. But it's definitely something that we are aware of and hoping to be able to present it correctly to the community.
Thank you, Tony.
And I just, and you know, we're not supposed to, we're not allowed to comment on this issue, but. I just want to say that the community concerns have not been ignored, that I just have been working on it, that they're ready to present. The first report to the community involving many other agencies, local and, uh, federal and statewide. So hopefully we'll, you know, we'll get a report and we will continue to address those concerns. Thank you. Any other public comments?
Anything on Facebook, Roberto?
Thank you. Then I will go back to item, uh, seven B.
Yeah, seven B, seven A, we table until George can come back, so now we'll move on to.
Seven B, which, uh, which is a community activity department report by Sheila Verdugo Supervisor, Community Activities Department.
Good evening, mayor and council members, can you hear me? Just double checking.
Yes.
Okay, um, so, uh, we have some programs going at the Veterans Hall. Um, we have the Community Day Program, um, and that is running from ten to two in the afternoon. Monday through Friday, and right now we currently have about twenty-five on average participants. Some days a little less, some days a little bit more, but averaging out twenty-five of the seniors. And I really, really am enjoying watching them, um, just socialize and getting back out. And they are a very happy group of people. Um, karate is on Tuesdays and Thursdays, Zumba Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays. And Fit to Succeed is also in the building on Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays. Events and collaborations, um, that we have been involved in are upcoming. Are, um, the nine eleven, the twentieth anniversary tribute that we, um, worked with Rotary on, um, at downtown King Street. Um, the vaccination clinic, Anna was involved in that. Um, Friday Night Flea Markets, of course, um, the last one will be October the eighth, out at the complex from seven to ten. Uh, Pistachio Festival, um, is going to be on October sixteenth and seventeenth. We will be working with Rotary again this year to put that on. Um, our Day of the Family is going to be combined with our trunk or treat. So we are currently working on getting vendors to come out and share their, um, information out on tables. Actually, and while they're actually giving out the candy for the trick or treaters. This year, I think we're going to do something just a little different, it'll be a drive-through, but we will actually have a walk-through. One hour prior to the drive-through, so we're not positive on the times yet, but we will be doing that in the high school parking lot. Um, like I said, we will do drive-through, but last year we had some kids that came up there that were walking. And so we were having to like get staff to kind of drive them through. Um, so this year, we're going to actually have an hour before, um, to have the walkers come through. Uh, the Thanksgiving, uh, well, actually Day of the Dead, um, that's going to be on November second, Anna's already working on that. They're collaborating with, um, several groups here in town that are going to help put that on. Um, Thanksgiving meal drive-through, um, it will be a drive-through again this year, it worked really well last year, so we, um. We are just going to, I believe that's going to be our theme, um, the drive-through. Holiday Magic is coming up December third. Um, things that are in progress, um, we are working, um, on a homeless resource collaboration. Um, we have been having some Zoom meetings and some emails back and forth. Just trying to connect with as many resources as we can and put something together for. Um, our unsheltered people here, so that they have the resources, they have the numbers, they have the contacts. That they need for the things like the mental health, the health, um, the EBTs, um, those kind of things. Um, we are also right now currently working on deep cleaning, um, facilities. We're working right now, um, last weekend and this week, and I believe next week, we will be working here at the theater. Um, we are doing bi-annual inventorying, once we get everything cleaned, we will then go back in and. Inventory everything, kind of organize it to where it needs to be. Um, we're also, um, having Kings County Health Department will be coming out to do inspections of our facilities. And that's another reason why we need to get them into ship shape. So, and we're also looking at doing, um, I'm not sure if, which one of us are going to do it, but we have to have a food manager's certificate. Um, to, um, if we are going to open up the theater, so, um, nobody here currently has one. So we're going to, um, either Anna or myself will be taking that food manager's course. Um, Community Garden, we, um, will be meeting sometime in the near future to discuss. And move forward with that project. Are there any questions?
Anything question for Sheila? See now, I do have one, Fit to Succeed, that program, we noticed fourteen students. Or is that, what, what kind of, is that a class or, or what is it?
Yes, mayor, it is, um, Fit to Succeed is ran by Vincent Rizendez. He, um, it's actually almost like a boot camp. He runs an exercise program and they go through pretty extensive, um, training and it's a weight loss program, basically. Um, I personally will not ever be seen in his class, because he is, he is a tough instructor. Um, and Zumba, of course, is the same kind of, it's a weight loss, stay fit, kind of tone-up program. But Fit to Succeed, you should actually go down and take a look at that, it's pretty interesting.
And he's been, we, he's been partnered with the city almost three years now, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, he's been here with us for several years. And then he will actually be out at Pistachio Days too as well, mayor, so when you go out, you'll see some of the things that he puts his students through. He'll have some, um, competitions, um, and things out at the Pistachio Days. So he's going to do like his tire stuff and some of his exercise things, um, so that you can actually, um, see. Um, some of what he does in his classroom or his class, not his classroom.
Good to know. So also on the Pistachio Festival, so you're going to use to only two days?
Um, no, they're actually doing a couple of some things, like a couple of days before, but it's not like what we're involved in really is the, the Saturday and Sunday. So I really don't kid on that, um, the two days prior to that, because it's, it's not anything major that we have to be involved in. But, um, the Saturday and Sunday, we're definitely involved in.
Oh, so it is still a four day?
Yeah, it'll still, yeah, yeah, I thought they were actually going to put it down to two days, but they're still talking up the four days, so.
Okay.
However, we need to work with them.
Okay, can community be asking, uh, let them know you support the event?
Yeah.
And on that, on that day, the, uh, Rizendez is going to do a, I think a, a run, a fun run or something.
Oh, yes, yes, he is.
What day, uh, sixteen?
On Saturday, on that Saturday. I believe it's going to start at eight in the morning.
Three K and five K.
Um, I think it's just. I don't know, but another, another thing I'm not going to be involved in. I'll take registration.
Take the money, yeah?
Oh, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Sheila, I think you forgot the, the, the most important update.
Which, oh, our, our staff, I'm sorry, we got three part-time staff.
Yeah.
So thankful, because it is five of us working and I'm telling you, it's, it's taken all five of us. Um, cleaning top to bottom and getting things organized, I'm, I'm thankful for each one of them, they, they have done a great job.
Hopefully at the next meeting in person, we can introduce them to council.
Oh, I think they would like that.
Would be nice. Any other question for Sheila? Seeing that, thank you, Sheila.
Okay, you're welcome, you guys have a good evening.
Thank you, Sheila.
I will move over to item, uh. B, number two, Avonno Police Department Activity Report by West East Tivers Chingo Police.
Hello, and Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, before I start with the August monthly report, I do want to, uh, give a shout out to Avonno Rotary and the Recreation Department. Uh, Sheila and Anna specifically for putting on the nine eleven event, um. Couple of weeks ago, so it was, it was a great event and, uh, thank you for doing that, um. So August was a busy month, we had a home invasion robbery at the lodging house. On the eight hundred block of East San Joaquin, uh, luckily Noah was hurt. We were able to find the suspects on a traffic stop where we located a firearm, as well as the victim's property. Apparently the Avonno gang members and the Parlier gang members worked together to get this accomplished and they went to jail together as well, so. Uh, great work by Sergeant Tapia's crew, which including him and, uh, Stride and Gunner and Officer Rascal. We're happy to put that case away and, uh, again, fortunately, nobody got hurt. Let's see, scroll down the bottom of the last one there, Officer Risk, um, was dispatched to domestic violence call. Another common, uh, theme during the months, uh, domestic violence. Uh, it turned out to be unfounded, but during the case, while she was talking to the reporting parties, as she came across a solicitation for a murder case. Um, where, uh, to kill a third party. So after a lengthy investigation, um, an arrest was made and the suspect was booked. And the, the DA's office has filed charges on that as well, so. I know it's only three sentences, four sentences in the monthly, but, um, it's still, it's still ongoing, so, um. Happy to, uh, get that case before the actual crime was committed as well. Um, as you all probably know, the fires in Northern California and now east of us. Prayers go out to all those people affected by that, we were fortunate enough to send Sergeant Carr and Officer Voiles to Lake Tahoe area for about eight days. Mutual aid request, we are in Region Five, uh, which the, the host agency of Region Five is Fresno County. And then they reach out to the county's sheriff's offices in those jurisdictions who reaches out to the cities, that's how. The mutual aid system works its way up. Um, they primarily worked on security and evacuated, um, houses up there and they came across a lot of bears, a lot of bears, so. Anyway, uh, they're working with El Dorado County Sheriff's Office, Sanford Police Department and Sheriff's Office here, so it was great, we were able to help out. Um, sent them up there originally for four days and, uh, it was just, they needed extra help. And rather than sending them back and having to send another crew up there, um, they, Carr and Royals. Decided they should just stay put and they were up there for eight days, so appreciate all the work they did for that. And, uh, luckily during the time, we had the staffing to allow for that here, it wasn't a huge burden on the folks here. Uh, that overtime that they spent up there is reimbursable, so we'll be getting that reimbursed and, uh. We, we'll submit the reimbursement soon, but we won't get the money until probably next year at this time. So we had National Night Out at the park, it was nice to be able to be out and about in a public event again, outdoors. And, uh, special thanks to Circle K and Lou for, uh, providing the condiment and some buns and some other things, water. And providing us, uh, a live band, that was pretty cool. And of course, the Public Works Department always does a great job in setting up, um, the bounce houses for the kids and, uh, they stick around and they take them down as well. So we appreciate their work. Next year, we will, because of the, the. Take them down as well, so we appreciate their work. Next year, we will, because of the, the heat, there's been a shift um. Across the nation, actually, a little bit here and there about moving the event to October. August has always been the hard date back thirty years ago when I got in law enforcement. But um I think we're gonna, there, there's a date in October everybody uses too, and I think we're gonna go the October date in twenty twenty-two. It's gonna be early on in the month too, so it won't, it won't um affect any other activities, but hopefully with maybe the more mild weather, we'll get a bigger, bigger turnout, so. You know, in our ongoing effort to keep the violence out of our community, we did some compliance checks um with our probation and parole. Clients this month or last month, we had numerous agencies in town. Um, so we, we made four arrests for various um charges. Some of them for ex felons that had ammunition, some people had uh parts of an assault rifle and things like that, so we're. Able to uh get that. So it's been five years since we've had a gang-related homicide, so I'm very, very proud of the fact of our department. As well as the community that seems like they can, they trust us enough to call and let us know when things just don't seem right, we're able to, to get there. Put out the fire, so to speak. So five years without a gang homicide, um, I'm not sure any other city in this county can say that. Still working on the RIPA, the racial profiling app that's coming up. We have to start reporting or we are gathering data in January twenty-two. We're going through a couple of different test cycles within that. And our traffic cameras project, uh we just got word this week, it will be next week. And so we're, we're happy to see that, that that project got caught up in the, the microchip supply chain that the uh rest of the world is suffering from. Real quick here, Senior Officer David Tapia was promoted to Sergeant this month, and so he's uh working with his new team. And we were able to hire Sergeant Dennis Vargas DJ back to the Avonel Police Department. He was gone for six years, so he was. Left here as a supervisor, went to another agency and uh came back as a sergeant, so he'll put in, fit in perfect for us, so. Anyway, any questions for me?
If I do have a question.
Chief Stivers?
Yeah, I think Councilman Hernandez, you had a question, right?
Yes, yes, my question is, uh, how many tickets do you normally issue on a monthly basis for a handicap parking, you unlock one handicap stall?
I, I would guess, uh, Ms. Renette is probably a couple. Is there a certain area we need to watch more closely than others?
Yeah, I've been advised by community members, you know, the, the parking at the fast credit union, especially on Fridays, has been abused. That and the amigo market, especially also like in the weekends.
Okay, I did get a complaint last week maybe about the uh credit union. I called the, the officer who was just down the street actually, and by the time he got there, um, the car was gone, so that, that was noted, so. Uh, credit union on Fridays, that sounds like it's a busy day, okay?
Yeah.
And then, uh, you said amigos?
Yeah.
The grocery store or the um?
The grocery store.
The grocery store, okay. All right, very good, thank you.
Any other questions? See now, thank you, Chief.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll go into item number eight, public hearings, we have none. And then the night, whole business. This one is to consider extending local emergency declare on March twenty-four, twenty twenty. Tony will take this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Councilmember. So as I have for. Almost a year now, bringing back this item regarding extending the local emergency declaration due to COVID nineteen. We're still in the midst of COVID nineteen. Luckily in Avonel, it's not hit us as hard, especially with this Delta variant. Um, as I've reported and posted previously, we're at about a sixty-five percent vaccination rate. Not sure if those numbers have been updated. Um, we are actively combating it as best we can. We're still giving out masks and hand sanitizer. We did get about four or five hundred additional gallons of hand sanitizer from the county. So we're going to be working to kind of get that distributed out, maybe giving out two or three gallons to each uh business owner. Mask, uh, we've been handing those out. Uh, we're running a little low and hoping, hoping to get a few, get some more. Um, community either calls us or we go and take them to the businesses. Um, at our events, we have little bags. Um, so we continue doing all that work, um, given that just in general, even though it seems that the Delta variant is slowing down. I know I saw reports that California, I think, has the lowest new cases as of this week or last week. Yeah, so things hopefully are looking up. It's almost two years of this, so we'll see what, what the future holds, but I think at this point, it's just kind of a holding pattern and. You know, standing still at least regarding COVID and what else we can do. It's just, if anything comes up, another variant or something else, we need a response to, just being able to do that. Um, our event last weekend, our hundred dollars for a hundred percent was a success. We had sixty, eighty-six individuals vaccinated, um, eighty-one of which were from Avonel. So that was really successful. I'll be um updating on that next in one of my new business. But I think we're, we're making headway with our community. Now, I'm very proud that at least in Avonel, we are the highest vaccinated city in the county. So we've been doing good work and hope the council continues to support that. And as always, just asking to extend the emergency declaration for an additional thirty days.
Any questions or comments? If now do we have a motion to extend the local emergency declaration? For COVID nineteen, I salute, you know, motion by Councilmember Du, is there a second?
I'll second it.
May second by Councilmember Hernandez. Angie Rocco, please?
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
You have to use the other mic, Angie. There you go.
All right. So let it show you pass four oh one up soon.
Excellent, thank you.
And with that, we're going to the other resolution to consider extending local emergency declare on May twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you again, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. This one's pretty straightforward. Um, at this point, we know we do have at least enough water to get through the water year based on our historic use. Now that the climate's getting a little colder, we are seeing a reduced usage, I think, five to six acre feet. Um, the water leaks have not been, have not been helping, but not as detrimental enough that's gonna need us to request additional water. Requesting, we continue extending this local emergency, even though it seems we're okay. We're still asking the community to conserve water with two days a week of watering. Uh, we did change back to uh an initial warning and then a citation. Reason that we still need to be cognizant of the drought situation is that there's no telling how this winter will go in terms of precipitation. There's not enough water, then that means next year will be even worse, and there is no guarantee that we will get the water that we request. I was on a call yesterday um with the State Water Resources Board. And they wanted to know our situation and what way they could potentially help. And they're looking at, given that we have our allocation right now, they say we're not. We're not in a crisis mode, but if we do reach a situation where we're not going to have enough water. They're going to try to prepare and put us on a queue for emergency funding, where potentially we could um. Treat the wells that we have in the city, that could potentially be used to supplement our water supply or some other means to. Give us an additional water supply. As I explained, the situation where that we are dependent on the water from the canal from USBR. And that when there's no water there, they're telling us that there's not going to be a certain amount of allocation. That does put us in a very uh critical position. So, that being said, you know, we're still monitoring the situation. The two thousand four hundred eighty acre feet are conditional, so we don't want to take anything for granted.
But also, we've got to be cautious regarding now. You know, water use.
Yes.
Will come for us next year. So, did you mention also the allocations that we're providing to state prison?
Yeah, so that was kind of their, the conversation I had was just more preliminary, but they, they discussed that there is a way to get. The state prison off of our water allocation or provide, if the wells are close enough to them, where that water could be for the prison. And that way, more water would be provided for the community, but that's something that they would be willing to explore and look at. So.
Also, we noticed at the last visit at the state prison, like we mentioned, uh, I believe we mentioned at the last council meeting. That the state prison is being proactive regarding uh bringing the uh water rail lines above ground. So, so be easier to fix and detect water leaks on their grounds, on state grounds, so. I believe that's been proactive and hopefully we won't have a tunnel of the past where there were water leaks underground that were. When I was for months or, or took a long time for them to repair.
Exactly.
Now they'll be visible and hopefully easy to fix. Okay, and there any other questions or comments? As I have come, I think you need to keep pushing for that, pushing prison allocation on the wire.
Yeah. But initially, that's why that conversation about the wells, because I believe there are two or three wells located at the prison. But when the prison came in, the agreement or my understanding, there is an agreement or by law that they would not be able to use or tap into those wells. That's why they're asking about our city wells and potentially putting another treatment process there to then supply directly to the prison, so.
Be closer and easier to treat and deliver.
Yes.
From the well that is just across this tree.
So we'll continue those conversations and hopefully make some headway, but. It's, I wish I had a, an, a, a good plan or answer to say, this is what we're doing, so next year we're not affected by the drought, but. We're all going to be affected. They're asking us, oh, is there any, any other sources you could buy from or farmer? I'm like, if we're going through the drought, that means everyone else is going through a drought, so, yeah, it's just a difficult situation for everyone.
What it was to buy, not sell.
I know, I know.
Okay, so see now the comments or questions, is there a motion to extend the uh local emergency declaration? I saw a motion by Council member Du, is there a second?
Second. Yes.
So second by Councilmember Hernandez, Angie Rocco, please?
Councilmember Hernandez?
Hi.
Councilmember Du?
Hi.
Mayor Prote Ramírez?
Hi.
Me apreciado.
All right, so let it show for the record, they pass four one up soon. Going three oh one up soon.
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we're going to new business, item number ten. And uh ten is to write a five, a pool for pushes or certainly equipment. For the IT, this, this item will be taken by the IT manager. Alberto, there?
Yeah, I think it's us to move along. Move around.
All right, can I get a mic check real quick? Awesome, thank you. Great. Oh, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, so in August twenty twenty-one, uh, this, the Avonel City Council approved us for a twenty-three thousand dollars for use in networking and enhanced remote op, work operation. In this project, the server was initially parted out for the IT department to assemble. Uh, in order to, sorry, the server was initially parted out in the IT department to assemble in order to avoid assembly fees. And to tailor these or to tailor said server exactly to our needs. Now, the silicon shortage is doing a number on us and unfortunately, uh, many part, many of these parts are backordered. But because the, um, because of said silicon shortage, the um, the chip manufacturers need to fulfill uh certain orders to third-party vendors before they can um. Uh, before they can start allowing um individual users to start buying from a retailer such as CDW, Newegg, Amazon, et cetera, et cetera. Um, whether they have these components or not is just, you know, it's up to just how much they can manufacture at any given point. Sand apparently is expensive, but, okay. So in the meantime, uh, staff was able to work out with, um, work with three different vendors, um, Dell, HP Enterprise and Colfax International. Uh, to part out a server tailored to our needs, and the three vendors all offered machines that are price comparable, but offer di- um, different available feature sets. Um, right here, I, I went ahead and give the, I gave you a Too Long Didn't Read, a shortened condensed version of um. Of uh each of the configurations. So with HP, they're only limiting us, limiting us to smaller hard drives of two terabytes a piece. Um, Tony, um, are you screen sharing right now?
Yes, can you see it or no?
Oh, sorry, I was on my machine.
Yeah, I'm there.
Uh, would you be, uh, would you be able to scroll down a bit? I'm going to go ahead and read the uh, the Too Long Didn't Read or the, the condensed version, but uh if we can start off at HP's version, okay? Okay, so. Um, here we're going to be looking at about twenty terabytes of total storage, um, sixteen terabytes of um. Of mechanical disk space, which is going to be used for our uh cold storage, so anything that just needs to be stored in um. In our server, but doesn't need to be immediately accessed, as well as uh two terabytes of um, of hot storage. So this would be the storage that we, that the city would be using to pull off immediately, so say there's just. An immediate project that's being worked on and a document needs to be pulled up right then and there, uh, this is the storage that they would be pulling from. This does meet our, this does meet our storage needs, but unfortunately, because these are smaller drives, um, we actually fill up the uh, the bay capacity. Um, each of these uh servers is going to give us about twelve spaces to work with. But here you can see that we're already using about eight of them. I believe this can, I believe this particular server is only giving us about ten spots, so that only leaves us with two, um. With two additional spaces, so it just means that there is no room for expandability. Uh, can we go ahead?
Colfax or next one? Here we go, Dell, go ahead.
So. I can't quite see that there. We're looking at a more or less a performance comparative. All the, uh, all the specs are, are on par with what we initially built out um. Um, in the, in the estimate, uh, but unfortunately, we run into this issue where uh Dell does not provide um. Standard, um, standard hard drives or SSDs, and if you, if we can scroll down, Tony, we'll see that they use their own individually branded um. Uh, in the, um, individually branded storage solutions, which unfortunately, we're not able to look up reviews on such. And we're finding that these, these drives are incredibly expensive. Um, Tony has here highlighted the sixteen terabyte drive, if you can scroll up a little bit. Uh, for fifteen hundred dollars a piece, when in reality, these drives are more or less in the uh five to six hundred dollar range for enterprise grade. And same thing goes at the uh, same thing goes at the four terabyte SSDs that we have parted out here at eighteen hundred dollars or uh one thousand eight hundred and forty-six. Which is, which of course, because these are um unlabeled drives, we wouldn't be able to look up reviews to uh check um long-term reliability and such. But otherwise, um, otherwise this build here is id, is more or less identical to the uh, to the one that we parted, that I brought up to council um about a month ago. If we can go back to Colfax. So Colfax is an independent company, as when I was working out or when I was talking to Gigabyte. Uh, the um, the, the manufacturer of the initial chassis that I have listed in the um, in the original estimate. Um, when I asked about purchasing, they sent me to a third-party, um, to a third-party vendor being, which would, which the third-party vendor being Colfax here. Um, so we gave him the initial, we gave him the estimate sheet and they were able to part out this entire build for us. And we kind of lucked out, um, due to the current market right now, uh, give me a sec. Let's kill that. Uh, due to the current silicon shortage market right now, um, hobbyist PC builders are actually taking up some of the lower-tier uh server-grade equipment. So that actually kind of leaves us with um only being able to purchase some of their higher-end stuff. But in the same vein, uh, we were actually given a discount of thirteen or of one thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars. Um, which essentially covers one of the three processors. So we were looking at a sixteen-core machine to be able to take care of our um, our server, our storage needs, to be able to take care of our domain. Which would manage all of the computers at once, but now with this extra free boost going from sixteen cores to thirty-two, um, we're essentially. We have a lot more wiggle room to work with and with um totally all the. And with, um, totally all the parts together, we're actually looking at, uh, eight thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars, um, after ship, uh, this is an out-the-door total. Um, it's a little more than we were anticipating, but because of the, the availability of just parts for, uh, the individual user to buy, um, we had to, we unfortunately did have to go this route. Um, sorry, go ahead.
I know you're good, continue.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't leave the prices of, um, on the sheet. I anticipated to be able to just read off of the, um, to be able to read off of the quotes. But by recommendation, I would like, um, staff is recommending by motion to authorize the city manager to approve the purchase of the storage server provided by Colfax, both because of its, um, competitive pricing and for its expandability.
And I'll actually add, I interject here that we actually did kind of go ahead and, and order it just because they're already promising two months lead time. Right, Umberto?
Yes, and the other two are probably asking about three to four months as well.
Yeah, so in the essence of time, I did go ahead and approve making the purchase order and also because they were offering of that free upgrade on the, one of the components of the processors. So we're asking council to retractively approve that action. But continue, Alberto.
Um, as far as fiscal impact goes, uh, the server will be paid from the ARPA Technology Communication Improvements for Remote Work and Public Interaction Budget for eight thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-six cents.
There any questions? Comments? Not, uh, is there a motion to, uh, approve the, uh,
Ratify.
I saw a motion by council member Google, very second.
I'll second it.
Second by council member Hernandez. Angie Roco, please.
Hi.
Nancy Verdugo.
Hi.
Hi.
Me apreciado.
Hi.
Lady George, that's full one up.
Yeah. Alberto, um, do you want to provide us a really quick update on what we're doing to kind of, for city hall at least, moving away from county IT so we can start uh, making some savings on that end?
Okay, so it, because of the lead time, uh, we're going, we went ahead and started preparing a mini storage server for the time being. Um, it's gonna be, it's only gonna be totaling about six terabytes of a total of raid-one storage, which means redundancy. Um, so if one of the drives dies, then you know, we'll still hold, we'll still have the backup to work with. But this is, um, these are, these are parts from our, this is from my personal setup, just so we can have, um, just so we have something to work with for the time being. Um, this won't be our permanent solution, but that should be ready within the next, um, by, hopefully, we're gonna have the machine built up to, uh, today, or sorry, by tomorrow, the parts just came in today. Uh, so I'll have that built, um, have it built and up and ready by, uh, by next week. So this will take care of our storage needs, um, for the time being. Uh, because this is gonna be a network drive, um, being, uh, transferring, uh, transferring files from, uh, from the, uh, from city staff's, um, H-drive or the county's network drive over to ours will be more or less a seamless transition of just relive, just dragging and dropping from their drive to ours. Uh, because it's all network-based, um, there is gonna be a little bit of a, um, there's gonna be a delay in transfer speeds, but it does mean that we won't actually have to go out to the county and, um, request a, request a copy of, uh, request a copy of our network share. Um, it'll be something that each of, um, each of our city staff users would be able to, um, to take care of on their own.
Yeah, and that'll help us with the transition of finally being in our own servers and not have to rely on the county and start saving there. And then you're also working on getting us some savings on the emails, correct?
Yes. So currently, right now, I think I mentioned in the last staff meeting, uh, we go through two different domains for emails. Um, I know some of our, some of our city staff uses a dot US, which is managed by Microsoft themselves. And, um, the rest of our dot com emails, which, um, some of public works staff use, or some of public works uses and city council uses as well, is managed by, uh, GoDaddy. So the difference in email pricing for these individual accounts is, um, eight to four, or four, four versus eight dollars a month. It's not a huge saving, but over the course of about a year, um, with fifteen users, it's about a six hundred dollar saving. Um, but this, but there's also potential for us to no longer have to pay for the dot com domain as well. So there's, uh, there's room for potential saving there as well. Um, we're just trying to unify all of our, um, we're trying to unify our emails so that we were not paying the cost of two domains. With Microsoft as well, um, we're able to, we're able to add and subtract licenses on the fly. So let's say, um, is, let's say a public works member, um, uh, needs to have access to Microsoft Office, but only has access to an email account, uh, we're able to give them office privileges right then and there. So it's both a money savings and a control thing.
Well, savings are always good and they're having to depend on a second party, so it's a good benefit to this.
I have another plan for savings, but it's not something I can, I can, it's not something I'm not confident in yet, but if I can make it happen, it'll save us even more money later on.
Yeah, like the money payment to the county, right?
Twenty-six hundred dollars every month.
Once I get the store, once I get this mini storage server up, we'll be good to, um, uh, we'll be good to separate from them.
Perfect. All right, thank you, Umberto, for sharing all that.
Thank you.
Move over to another ratifying another approval for push of gift cards for use on September nineteen twenty twenty-one for the COVID vaccination event. Tony will take his.
Yes, and let me see if I can add a file to this real quick. So, this is basically approving, um, our event from last week, uh, buying of the gift cards. So to kind of keep things kosher, and we partnered with a number of different agencies, um, Renaissance School District was a primary partner, United Farm Workers as well, and the five, Wonderful Family Resource Center, Rotary Club and Adventist Health all helped to host and provide different aspects to the COVID-nineteen vaccination event on Sunday. As I mentioned previously, vaccinated eighty-six individuals. Our goal was a hun, at least a hundred and fifty. Our way to attract the community was to purchase gift cards worth a hundred dollars, fifty of them, and then purchasing another hundred worth fifty dollars. Um, the gift cards for a hundred dollars were from UFW, since they have a little bit more history and control of how they disperse them. Um, well, as people were getting vaccinated, I kind of saw their process. They put them in an envelope. Um, they're meant to only be used for groceries, so either at local grocery stores or any grocery store, but only for groceries. Um, they get the person's name and number and they activate it two days after. So there's a lot more control on that, and that's partially why we wanted to work with them, because I know gift cards can be a little bit of a touchy situation, especially with public funds. Uh, for this respect, because of ARPA, this is something they are encouraging to do, these sort of vaccination events. But regardless, we wanted to rely on, on an organization that already has a little bit more experience doing that. Mm-hmm, and a lot of community members have gotten fifty, seventy-dollar gift cards. So I think that poll for a hundred dollars definitely helped a lot. Um, we had one individual come from Contuah Creek, even wanting to get that, that funds, but we did limit it to only Avenal residents, and we were checking either an address or, you know, we know who lives in Avenal, so it was mostly Avenal residents. That being said, there was a cost to getting those gift cards, a processing fee and then the delivery. So that's above the five thousand dollar limit, purchasing limit that the city manager has. So that's basically why we're bringing this to council, just to ratify the approval of having spent that funds. And I had been waiting on the invoice and they sent it to me this morning. So the actual total cost was a little less, it was five thousand seventy-two dollars and fifty cents. Um, and just an FYI, we do still have seventy gift cards left or sixty, my math is right. Uh, sixty-three gift cards left.
That's on the fifty dollars.
Yes, that's, that are for our local, um, businesses, which you'll see here, I included a list of how many we purchased from each. Actually, no, it's a little bit less, because there is one business that did not open while we were hoping to get, um, buy gift cards from them. So we actually ended up buying only forty-six. Um, regardless, we do have gift cards left over and our hope is to use it at our next vaccination event. They will be coming back October tenth. That'll be for the second dose of the Pfizer. Um, and if not, then we'll also use it at our, uh, community events, potentially, you know, bring, show us that you're vaccinated, you'll get a gift card or enter a raffle for a gift card. And just to keep it still within what that funds were for. Um, bad, asking council's approval of having purchased the gift cards for the September nineteenth vaccination event. The amount not to exceed five thousand ninety-one dollars, but actually was five thousand seventy-two and fifty cents. And this is coming from the ARPA funds direct community response budget.
Any questions or comments? If maybe there's a motion to ratify the purchase of these cards. So, motion by council member for Google, is there a second?
I'll second it.
By council member Hernandez. Angie Roco, please.
Hernandez.
Hi.
Nancy Verdugo.
Hi.
Mayor Prote Ramírez.
Hi.
Me apreciado.
Yes. So, the record passed four. Yes, one up. Thank you. With that, we'll move over to, uh, eleven. Correspondence announcements and closing, closing comments. So, do you have any correspondence?
We don't have any correspondence.
Any announcements?
I do have an announcement. I am working on updating the purchasing amount for the city manager. I'll be probably working with Moses, but that's something that I'm researching and working on at the moment.
Yeah, so hopefully we don't have to keep coming back for everything over fif, ten dollars, fifty dollars over five thousand to be, and we mentioned, I know we talked about this a year ago about visiting, revisiting that and, and updating it. Definitely help with all the ARPA funds that we're hoping to expand.
It's. Uh, thank you, Angie, and during the other announcements.
Um, yeah, I'll have a bit of a list, I'll try to go through it real quick. Um, we are working closely with West Hills to provide, um, ESL classes. Um, I know their interim or acting president, West Hills Kalinga, Sam is on the line. Uh, we've been working with him on providing classes. Our hope is to start, they'll start classes for the community, um, next month, and this will be hosted at the tech center. I'm still working out some details, but we'll probably be bringing an MOU, uh, hoping to provide them the facility at no cost, once we have the MOU, and they'll also provide the classes at no cost. Um, and we'll help with the outreach as well. Uh, I know there's been something, the community, some part of the community has been asking, uh, additional classes and hopefully this can start not just ESL classes, but other potential classes from West Hills. So we're working on that. Um, with Rotary as well, um, we're hoping to do an MOU with them as well in terms of the Pistachio Festival. Kind of same, same vein that we had with, um, old timers, they were just trying to formalize that relationship. And now that we do charge for our facilities and whatnot, they're used to, we usually don't charge them for use of those facilities and as councils, um, discretion, we don't have to, but I'd like to have an MOU in place, just formalizing that because we're partners with them, there's not gonna be a cost. Um, I do have to provide updates on the garden. I know that was brought up at the last meeting. Um, and we do have a sketch, we still just need to kind of outline some of the items and then work on the timeline. Um, hoping at the next meeting to introduce council to our new part-time staff. Um, at the next meeting, we'll also have the utilities department, Ronald will have a presentation, um, for all those projects from the list that we presented when we approved the ARPA budget. Uh, just wanna bring council, be aware of some of the, the needs at the water and wastewater plant. Um, as mentioned earlier, we are working, staff, code enforcement and myself are working with different agencies to host a town hall meeting next month in October to discuss the concerns of the landfill. So that has been ongoing. They've been conducting an investigation. I believe they're ready to kind of share what they've found. Um, again, they have more expertise on this, this, this side. Uh, we'll be helping to facilitate and probably provide a space for that and potentially even interpreter if they request it. But we do want to ensure that this is something accessible to the community and can hopefully satisfy a lot of the concerns and questions that have been asked in the past. Um, do have good news regarding the bonds. The Department of Finance did approve the city's request to move forward on the refinancing of the bonds. So I'll be meeting with the bonds team tomorrow morning to see what the next steps are, but we'll hopefully be bringing that to council soon to make some movement on that as well. And other than that, as I said, next, our October tenth, Sunday, there'll be our next vaccination event. And that'll be for the second dose of Pfizer and for anyone who wants to get the first dose as well. Those are my quick updates. Oh, and next Saturday, there'll be a, um, pet vaccination event at Rice Park. And I'll be sure, I don't have the flyer on me, but, um, next Saturday. This isn't, so our, our animal control is facilitating and helping the event, but it's not a city-hosted event. It is from the Visalia S. SPCA, yes. They're the ones hosting it. We've been asking them to come out and maybe help us once, once a month, once a week to maybe help with some vaccinations. So they instead decided that they'll come and do an event and see kind of what the needs are. They're providing vaccinations at low costs. Um, so hopefully anyone who's, who's needing vaccinations or, or for their dog or cat can come out.
Evening times.
I don't have it in front of me, but if you give me a second, I can pull it up. Yeah. Give me one quick second, I'll pull it up and I'll, I'll, I'll show it right now. Be showing. So it'll be Saturday, October second, from nine AM to twelve PM, so in the morning. But it is a Saturday. We usually do ours on a Wednesday. And you'll see there are some, some free vaccinations there are very low cost.
Will the city be also, uh, doing the, uh, license?
Not at this event. Yes, vaccinations. We'll be facilitating helping with animal control.
All right, thank you, Tony, for, uh, those announcements now. We're going to closing comments. The closing comments by our city clerk.
None at this time.
Thank you. We're closing comments by, uh, legal counsel.
Uh, not, not this time, mayor.
Thank you. Any closing comments by council member for Google? Yes. Lately, I've been, uh, noticing that there's lots, many vehicles on our streets that are either, been sitting there for a long time, expired tags, it's all over town. And then also, uh, some traders with a bunch of trash sitting on our streets, and they've been sitting there for a while too, and, uh, I think we need to look into or have the code enforcement go around and, and talk to those people that have those vehicles on the street. And I know there's a couple wrecked ones that are sitting on our streets that shouldn't be there, just, uh, we do.
Look at it again.
Or that stuff again, because it's, it's coming in nuisance around, somewhere as a town, when people are just parking cars and leaving them there for long periods of time and also pretty much a bunch of trash. Yes. Thank you. Uh, there any closing comments by council member Hernandez?
None at this time.
Thank you. There any closing comments by Mayor Prote Ramírez?
No, not this time.
Thank you. Yeah, any closing comments by council member?
Yes, there was one item I think I forgot to bring up, um, that we had been talking about bringing in, um, Angie and I both forgot to mention it. Uh, our next council meeting will also be having the, on October fourteenth, we'll be having the county present on redistricting. So the, our request regarding having some sort of presentation or, or town hall here in Avenal, um, the response was, uh, they will be sending, uh, county staff to do a presentation on the process and where they're at in the process. Um, so that'll be October fourteenth. We told them that, that meeting would, would be good for them to do a twenty-minute presentation. Um, along those same lines. Um, along those same lines, there is also a request from Ruth Lopez of Valley Voices, who is willing to do a separate presentation to kind of explain some of the work that her nonprofit has been doing. Um, as they're presenting some of their own maps um for redistricting. I know maybe there might be a interest of having maybe a special meeting or some sort of um town hall to have her also present her maps. So not sure how how the council feels about that.
Yeah, uh, I actually met uh Ruth Sanchez.
Lopez.
Lopez, Lopez, uh, last uh Sunday at the after the vaccination event, she was there with the booth. And uh, I believe uh it will be uh good for our community to also have a you know, conversation with Valley Voices regarding what their findings of the doing. That way, when the county comes over with their uh presentation, the community and ourselves are ready and prepared to ask questions, the concerns. So that way it's not just a one-way presentation, you know, we're less and the concept will will benefit our our community with this training. So just to see if it's going to affect us or not. So we're actually looking at a at a calendar to see when it will be a good day for special meeting.
Yes, if council would like to host either as a special meeting or just have staff do like a town hall informational. I think maybe the week before the next council meeting, so October seventh might be a good date. That way it's still kind of fresh. But if council has any direction on that.
Any specific times? So what's your idea about uh having these uh town hall presentation or special meeting? Seven, seven is a good time.
Yeah.
For me too. So would that be a good day for uh Mayor Putim Hernandez and council member, sorry Ramirez? Mayor Putim Ramirez and council member Hernandez to have a presentation by Valley Voice on uh October seventh?
Yes.
What was the time? I'm sorry.
Uh, October seventh, a Thursday, probably probably six PM. Quick question for you, Moses. Does it, do we need to make it a meeting if we have council there? If they're just there to like watch a presentation? Or can we do it just as a town hall and have this organization present? If they're present.
As you don't need to notice it as a separate meeting if it's somebody else is hosting it. Um, but I would just caution, make sure that you don't um that a majority of the council does not comment on the same issue.
Okay. That being said, um, is there a preference on just having it as a town hall meeting? Or would you want to make it as a special meeting and have that special presentation?
Well, I would like to also uh probably to get the community involved, maybe better to have a town hall meeting.
Because we can still do online and 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 post it and everything.
Okay. Uh, what, one thing I would say is if um, you know, i- if the council does want to comment on everything, then then, yeah, I think it would be best to post it because then you don't run into any problems. So, um, but I would just be clear at the at the meeting itself that um that it's not posted as an action item, that there, you know, anything the council says is not going to be taken as a an approval or rejection of any position or or proposal.
Yeah. We can do that. We can make sure to make it as a special presentation and leave it at that informational.
Which will crest the line. Okay, so but we will be able to ask questions still. That'll be fine. Yes.
Yeah, that should be fine, especially if it's posted as something that's informational, non-action item.
Okay, so we'll make sure that it's posted like that, informational on.
Six PM? Got it. Sorry, I had it on my list and I skipped it. Thank you. That was my last, that's my comment.
Thank you, Antonio. So I just would like to report that uh you've been involved with Anthony praying to get that uh class. ESL class to Avonall. And we have gotten a good uh support from West Hills College. They also besides that ESL class, they're looking in the future to also offer other vocational classes that the community will benefit. So we also visited uh, visited with Pat Sanchez and uh, you know, talking also about uh how how we can bring vocational classes for other classes that will benefit now in the younger uh community, but also the adults. Looking at maybe having some vocational classes here at the the high school or it can be probably at the tech center or, you know, we're open to discuss that with them too. Also, uh, when I I attended the air governing board meeting and uh it was approved uh in the past, you know, how you can retire your car. They they had a nine, it had to be ninety nine, ni- nineteen ninety nine or older. And and also another requirement was that it had to have fail, that small check. So it was revised in a, it was a consensus to bring that up to two thousand and six, two thousand and six.
Model, yeah.
Of two thousand and six model and not necessarily had to fail small. So as you know, you can have a, you know, a two thousand and one or two thousand and two year model car, but it's still polluting compared to newer cars. So the whole idea is to reduce pollution and and give up people a bigger opportunity to retire cars that are fully in the eight counties that are the governing board uh overseas. So this is gonna be a a uh Central Valley wide uh program will be available in uh also uh you know, uh, we attended the Sacramento League of California Cities. We're trying to bring uh options and idea to our community. We'll get it, get another information regarding, you know, retirement pla- plans called PERS. Right now, the big thing, I will be voting tomorrow regarding uh local control for land use or many other regulations. So the state doesn't take that away from local uh governments. Also, uh, there's a tax uh that uh for railroad tax that also the city communities are fighting. So to be uh to be uh this 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 uh to be equally given to communities, it looks like the way it is right now, bigger cities get get most of those revenues from those several uh taxes. So I want to make it kind of so that are expanded to more communities to get more tax revenues, so that will benefit. Uh, also, uh I want to, I also want to say that uh the nine eleven events was was well-planned with Rotary and city staff. I want to uh thank chief and police department officer, the shore fire department. Uh, it is very critical and uh, you know, it it remembers not to forget what happened in nine eleven. And uh, if you see, uh, you know, always be thankful for the uh people that get their life. Firemen, police people, uh, first responders that were there and some of them lost their life. So uh, I also want to say that uh the event of the of the uh park. It 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 was a success thanks to, you know, in the past, even the county, when they came, you know, with their gift certificates. You know, there were only two, six, maybe eight people who got vaccinated. So it it it's good to see that uh, you know, eighty-six people were vaccinated, increasing the percentage that we have right now. We're really trying hard, you know, it's still, it's it's still not over. I I I heard on the news yesterday that average of two thousand people are dying nationwide in just in the US. We're expecting the number to continue. So, you know, we, you know, we we really need to get our community of our friends, our family members vaccinated and uh continue with a safeguard. Today, you know, in some, in a, in a conference, you didn't see not a single person without a mask and trying to keep the distance as much as possible. So they're they're making it really, really uh abiding by the regulations, trying to be safe in trying to control the uh COVID nineteen. So with that, I just want to send the community for also doing their best and helping our community to move in a progressive way. And uh, we'll be looking into all the concerns seriously that you have. And uh, you know, we'll get back to you on all those questions that we cannot answer. Thank you. And if there are any other meetings, any comments?
Think we can move to closed session?
We're going to closed session uh seven thirty-two and I, and I will be back and we had something to report. But at this time, I will open public comments for the closed session.
Now, we don't need to, no, yeah, we did public comment, did public comment again. And we did let the the public know that we were at, we added an item, but we're covered.
So we're good then. We know we're going to close session. Thanks.
Thank you, everyone. So we'll start with that item and then we'll kick them out. Thank you.
To call.
There we go. Now, I'm birth well, I'll text them right now, but we can we can report out right now. All right, we're back in open session.
We're back in open session. It is nine twenty four. Now this time we have nothing to report out of process.
Okay.
So.
That being said.
That being said, our meeting is adjourned.
Nine twenty four.
Thank you.
Have a good one. Have a safe trip back.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Bye.